Hi Declan, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. Sorry about the music, Mr. Operator, could we turn the music off?
Thought we joined the relaxing lounge.
Hello, good afternoon, everybody.
Hi Declan.
Hi.
Hi Declan.
How are you?
So we will just start the session in five minutes, in three minutes, sorry, is that okay?
Three minutes, ye- yeah, okay, okay, we're going to be very tight, but yeah, okay, thank you. Is that Charles?
Yep, it is Charles.
Yeah, great, okay, Charles.
Alright, thank you Declan.
Yeah, thank you.
Apologies for the slight delay, the previous session just ran a bit over time.
Yeah, we understand, yeah.
Yep, thanks.
Good, good, good.
By the way, shall we pass some presentation or just to speak because it's a very short...
It's very short, I mean, if you can stick to five minutes or six with the presentation, great, go ahead, you know?
Yes, I have just a very broad magic slides, that's all.
Yeah, just while we're waiting for our three minutes, and one reason I'm happy you're here today is I just want you all to know each other because this is probably going to be part of, beginning of the process towards the UN General Assembly as well, so I'm just going to, you've got, I don't know what you're seeing, but my good friend Eric in sunny Argentina, who is Mr. Biodiversity in Latin America, and Domingos, who is Mr. Spaceman, based in Portugal, who's been a long associate on radio astronomy and lots of other really good stuff. And again, I'm looking at my screen, so not a priority, and we have Sumitra in Canada at BioAstra, who is amongst other things convening the Materials Day at the United Nations in September. And we have Barbara in Italy, hi Barbara, who is also an interplanetary person, as I call her, so great to have you Barbara. And we have Intezar Sogiran, who is the Foreign Minister in Sudan, delighted to have you here. Intezar, again, brilliant, always to listen to you. We have Melvin from the DARA project, he's based in the UK, but the DARA project is based in Africa. And then I have Brian, who's representing the head of the Sahel Coalition of Countries. And hi, Brian.
Hi Declan.
Good to see you, yeah. And again, just everyone, we'll go for five minutes, and I'll just announce five minutes when we get there, if you haven't already stopped, and that's, let's say... And again, just the broad idea here is the really, the importance of truly global collaboration. We, of course, are here for the African Astronomical Society, but I suppose two points about that. Astronomical science lends itself through the generation of capabilities and skills to many other areas of science and applications. So I think we need to recognize that, and also through the good people here. Again, just provide a broad perspective on why collaboration is important in any flavor. I think that's the key, key objective of this session, so don't worry about the astronomy bit. You can talk about the exercises that you've undertaken, your activities, and again, why you know, and you all do, participate at a global level in some extraordinary meetings, and you know, my view is simply we have to do, we have to do much more of that. So, Mr. Operator, what do you want us to do?
Yeah, you can start, Declan.
Yeah?
Okay, yep.
Yeah, okay, just give me a little, a little second, and here we go. Great, everybody, you're all very welcome. We are here at the African Astronomical Society, General Assembly. We have a special session this afternoon, looking at international science collaboration. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, the session, the meeting, of course, is astronomy, but we want to focus on astronomy, but we want to take a very, very broad view of that, and I think through, for example, the SKA Radio Telescope and many other amazing astronomy projects and initiatives, we have really seen how astronomy is really, truly a global science. And many of my friends and the medical scientists point to astronomy and say, well, you know, we should be global like that, and we should have big instruments like that, and they look on with a certain amount of envy. So just taking that point of, as our point of departure, i.e. collaboration. Our speakers this afternoon, who are honored to have, will present their experiences and just illustrate individually and collectively why this collaboration stuff is important, and of course, my message has been and will continue to be that the tremendous and terrific scientists need to be supported at global level by an enabling policy and an enabling regulatory environment. That doesn't happen overnight, of course, I'm not saying that it does, but that needs to be there to enable the wonderful science that we have. So without further ado, I would like to go now to our first speaker, Professor Intezar Sogiran from the University of Khartoum. Professor, the screen is yours, you're very welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, good afternoon. Thank you, Declan, for the invitation, that's really very important to discuss some of the main issues concerning, especially concerning the issues here in Africa. Now, yes, to talk about the Ferris point, which is... Is it okay? Can hear some noises, I don't know?
Now it's good.
You hear me? Ah, alright, okay. Now to talk about the Ferris point, that is about how to develop cooperation and participation relations with the relevant research institutions, or whether locally or regionally or internationally, to speak from Africa and from an African country and from an African university. Yes, we need to do that, of course, but we need Ferris to do something concerning our own institutions in Africa before developing the relations between Africa and the North in general. So there is a lot of work to be done, for example, if we want to transfer, for example, the knowledge, if we want to talk about how to enhance success projects in Sudan in general or in Africa in general, how to build knowledge society and how, for example, to integrate science, technology and innovation into policies of national development programs and socio-economic reforms. For, to do all this, we need, the important thing which I always talk about is the commitment, the commitment of the governments, the commitment of the policymakers in Africa in general. So this is really very important if we want really to go forward in this issue. Now, if I want to talk about the types of collaborations that we are having here, for example, in my own research program, I am an archaeologist, so looking at archaeology and what is going on in my country. Yes, we are having this collaboration with international bodies, we are having collaborations with universities. And it is not the Africans or the Sudanese who are the only benefited from it, but also the people from these universities are benefited as well, because they are having research areas where they can conduct their research. For example, we have relations with the University of Bergen in Norway, and that started in the 60s of the last century in anthropology and archaeology, and actually, the country has afforded for them large areas of research that they can conduct their research and build their own capacity, of course. Besides, of course, some of the colleagues from my own country, who has just finished or got their capacity building in Norway. Again, another example is in France, in France, for example, many of the archaeological missions working in the country, they have afforded many chances for some Sudanese to be trained in France, and of course, they bring with them other students from French universities who got, again, benefited, and this is the same, going the same way. Again, with Britain, of course, as a colonizer of the country, since the late 19th century and the mid of the 20th century, yes, we have this international collaboration, and I remember very well, in 2004, I have assigned them, M O U is McDonald Institute of Archaeology, where many of my colleagues have benefited from it, and they have been a sort of student exchange or movement between the two countries. So it is good to have the international collaboration in the field of science. But we need to talk, to say something about Africa with them, there is a world-class research in Africa. Yes, there is, there is what is called Alliance for Accelerating Excellence in Science in Africa. It is AESA, which has been created in 2015, and it has been created through partnership of Pan-African, Non-Profit African Academy of Science and African Union Development Agency. And through this body, there has been major science infrastructure, human resources training, and education investment in the nations of Africa, and there are two main projects that have been conducted, like developing excellence in leadership, training on science, it's going on, and like what is called Grand Challenges Africa. And this one, it aimed at inspiring innovation to address significantly impact major health problems in Africa. And of course, we don't have time to add more in this, but this is really very important. So science and research in Africa matters. It matters not only because our people matter, but also because people elsewhere in the world it will thrive only if science is driven by the best possible talent and initiative of all the peoples of the world. And it matters, again, because there are many levels on which the future of the world is being impacted by African research and by the potentials that we are having for more research here in Africa. Africa is still in this field, it's a virgin area where people can carry a lot of research. Now, the last thing that I would like to say is that we don't need to remain in the cocon stage. This is no longer an option, just to stay on that stage. So we need to work towards transformation, and we need to move towards what Africa meant to be. And there, of course, we know there are breakdowns, there are breakthroughs as well, and for both, we need to acknowledge that. And we need really to have this collaboration to be among the African bodies themselves. We know, for example, observatory, for example, for to measure what we have, to see what type of research we are having. So we're having one observatories, if they are united, then we will have one for Africa, and then after that, we can have more research and more science from Africa. Thank you, Declan.
Thank you very much, Intezar, for these insights, very, very helpful, and we will take these points on board very much. And again, I think the Africa focus is hugely important, and yes, I think you make a very valid point in the sense that collaborations are important, but they have to be based on the strong capability in Africa and in African institutions, so hugely important. Next, we will go to Domingos Barbosa, Domingos, the screen is yours for five minutes, please, thank you.
Okay, just let me... Can I share my screen? Yeah. Can you see my screen?
Perfectly.
Okay, so, so overall, I'll give some, an example with a few lessons learned over these years. So we have developed a very strong collaboration, first bilateral, then became multilateral very quickly throughout these years, with Mozambique, South Africa and several other countries. Taking advantage of the presence of the Aga Khan Development Network, which is a very strong development network, in particular with presence in Southern and Eastern Africa, in the Indian coast, we developed the Doppler Project, development of power of knowledge in radio astronomy, taking advantage of the Africa, the LBI network and square kilometer array. So I wanted to enhance first Mozambique scientific communities through economic development and capacitations. And in its essence, we share a lot with the much bigger data project that has been driving a new paradigm in scientific and economical development relations between European and African nations. So of course, we had to entail and address through this the Sustainable Development Goals, which Sustainable Development Goals we should address, and this was very important to create a message to the local policymakers. Otherwise, they will not buy it. And it is essential that UN Societal Development Goals always come as our development goals. And this is what actually policymakers know. So this was born out to contextualize the Mozambique reality and African reality, enhance the country's participation in technology products and the knowledge economy. It is a land of opportunities, but it has also some obstacles that we need to address, identify and also develop revenue streams to enable science infrastructure to become self-sustainable. It is a very particular point that is extremely important. You really need to focus on the good relations with policymakers, politicians and regulators to this. And also to engage with local enterprises, projects, young entrepreneurs, to regularly and effectively establish strong links with other European and African development projects. There are a lot of development projects, but we need to create synergies among them, because otherwise, we are just duplicating knowledge without impact. This is very important. And of course, promote local entrepreneurship projects and engage them. Of course, the bottom line is, is that the reality, it's a little bit different from what we are used in some of the European countries. It's, African population is very young. If you see on the right, the map, it is, we need to address the, that the average age is very young. And these people need to be provided with very clear goals, and they should, their education and their development projects should really source into this reality. So for examples, throughout the collaborations very broad, like SKA, LBI Network and so on, we have been engaging in providing new education opportunities. SKA has been done in, it's quite admirative as a project, what they have done and what they are continuing to do there. It's also, we realize that it was very easy to bridge the gap with very important concerns of, in this case, Mozambique, but other countries as well. We had to address, for example, Earth's observation, so that techniques are very similar to astronomy. And then we could jump on very easily through these techniques, take advantage of Copernicus, for example, of Galileo and so on, and create tools for crop assessment, flooding management and so on. And this is something that is very, very important. Again, examples, like in several schools, since several years that has been growing. We also made an effort to decentralize, and this is important. Usually you concentrate where infrastructure is very good, and, but most of the population is outside big cities, where this can be developed. So we decided to address several workshops on smart farming and on remote sensing outside Maputo, so that the local young people, the local technicians, the local engineers could engage in an hands-on approach. And this was new opportunities, this should be considered very, very clearly. This is Internet of Things, connected sensors activities. So we took a bunch of sensors, we taught a few technologies, and people start engaging on this. So this is a big data course where we taught Python, but also some big data tools coming from Facebook, for example. And this was putting agriculture sensors on crops, and this was very important. That's what we called for smart farming, and we created the spin-off activities out of these smart cloud of things. It was actually very successful in field testing. Another activity is that we engaged with several countries, from Germany, South Africa, Mozambique, Portugal and others, was the Magesi Agambo, it's bridging the gap with renewable energy in a smart way. And grid infrastructure is a heavy development, it's costly, takes time to roll out as a plan, but you can take advantage of new developments and with cost reductions to, for example, power in a very smart way, farming, aquaculture and food storage, which requires coal, for instance, but also accountability. And when we talk about accountability, that's when regulatory space comes into line. And for example, we're talking about data collection, analysis, which crops, plantations, management decisions, so on. That's where we need to engage not only the future of the nations, the youngsters, but we need to engage policymakers, the regulatory aspects, and translate this into real effective policymaking. And I will finish.
But thank you, thank you, Domingos, that was tremendous. Yeah, some very, very exciting examples of the work you're doing, and thank you for making the linkage between the practical expressions and the regulatory environment, which is the point we're trying to drive. Thank you, thank you, Domingos. I'd now like to turn to Barbara Cavallazzi, Barbara, you hear me?
Yes.
The screen is yours. Thank you very much.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. So, welcome to everyone, to my short contribution to this session. I will present some activities I've done in terms of collaborating to create opportunity. My name is Barbara Cavallazzi, and thank you, Declan, to invite me to participate to this session. I'm a geobiologist and astrobiologist from the University of Bologna in Italy and a adjunct professor at the University of Johannesburg in South Africa. And my talk today is coming out of my research experience in Africa. As an astrobiologist, I'm interested in extreme environment on our planet to be used as analog for Mars or other extraterrestrial bodies. And for this reason, I had a chance to visit many remote areas of our globe, and especially in Africa. And the image you can see here in the background is a famous hydrothermal system in Ethiopia that I've studied in collaboration with my colleague, Professor Miral August from the University of Macale. And we were able to demonstrate in collaboration that this is a perfect natural laboratory to learn more about life, both on Earth and on other planetary bodies. Now, traveling to Africa and fascinated by its unique geology and basically on its potential in planetary science, I decided to take up this challenge, create more research collaboration opportunity in Africa and for Africa. Probably many colleagues, especially early career and students from Europe and Africa, are looking for connection and collaboration, but aren't reaching out to start a conversation. And of course, collaboration isn't about who knows more and who's done more. Rather, it's about coming together with a common goal to make an impact that's bigger in science, that's bigger than ourselves. So, um, so as a typical from geologists, I decided to start from the ground. I was creating, and sorry, sorry, and I wanted to create collaboration from the bottom. So I wanted to learn, for instance, helping, I wanted to build some things from the school in terms to start the collaboration with the school and the top-level educational system. I visited in Africa, in Ethiopia in particular, a lot of schools. So I was back to Italy and I have created this Alma in the frame of Alma engage of the University of Bologna, this project related to space, so Space Speaking Planet to Teachers Community in Ethiopia. Having as a target, teaching teachers in order to reduce the communication problem due to the high number of acting language, and also to refresh programs and introducing where possible innovative methodologies to pursue methodically and regularly the training of teachers, whatever in approach we have, we need to be sustainable and operate with strictly long-term action and in full respect of local tradition. Particularly, I was thinking about encouraging female teachers to not abandon their careers and also to encourage female students. So with the support of the University of Bologna and Europlanet, that is the largest community in research infrastructure in Europe, I started some activities such as organizing workshop and training school for teachers, especially from the remote area, because that, there are the places where I'm working more, organizing activity for students and kids from the village, bringing them to the field, teaching them how incredible is the environment in which they live, with the idea to inspire some students and maybe to fascinate some of them to decide and bring it into the way of the science. In touch with this Europlanet research infrastructure, I was convincing them to create a task that now is existing, and this task is global collaboration and integration development that aim to generate a globally integrated interconnected planetary science community, stimulating new collaboration, especially in Africa. Recently, for instance, we were organizing a workshop in Botswana on satellite, on satellite, and we are also thinking to organize more practical workshop. For instance, from this workshop in Botswana, we already have a new Erasmus line between the BUSE, the Botswana International University of Science and Technology in Botswana and the University of Bologna, that will move back and forth, incoming and outgoing, both staff and PhD and master's students. Again, also, sorry, we had a meeting years ago on scientific subject, and we discussed about how to collaborate more, how to develop more the planetary science in Africa in particular. We were in Botswana again, and we discuss and we bring, we focus on some problem that probably were, how to prepare the new generation to work in planetary science. So in collaboration with South Africa, Botswana, Ethiopia, Nigeria, Zambia and the University of Bologna, we proposed a project to the Infrafrika Academy Mobility, and we got some funding. So now the BUSE in Botswana is leading this project that is, basically is, will create a new professionalism in space science, so new generation will probably be more able to be involved in planetary science in Africa. So just to conclude, African science and scientists should be better supported at all level, starting from the ground, from the school to the high-level research. As well, I firmly believe that African scientific data should belong to Africans and shared in collaborative system. This, the, so the research in Africa, the science in Africa, will need more support and coordination and more commitment, both from the institution and the government. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much, Barbara, and just maybe picking up from your introductory remarks, I fully support your approach, which I characterize as inclusive cooperation and collaboration in the ways that you have outlined, so thank you, Barbara, for that stimulating overview. I'd now like to turn to Sumitra Rajagopalan from BioAstra in Canada. Sumitra, do you hear me? Come in, Sumitra. Sumitra?
Hello?
Good morning, how are you?
Yeah, fine, thank you.
You're very welcome, Sumitra, the screen is yours.
Okay, well, it's such a pleasure to be talking collaboration with such a wide cross-section of people from literally all over the world. I come to the notion of collaboration from obviously the perspective of someone in the private sector, where I guess, like it or not, we always think about outcomes first, for better or for worse. Now, personally, we're in, I'm in the field of materials. Now, personally, I'm in the field of material science, been so for the last 25 years. And material science, as it has been historically, has always been the enabler of something bigger and better. It's very rarely been an end goal in itself. To that extent, material science was born off of one physicist talking to one chemist and trying to find common ground that is on the fundamental science side. And then thereafter, turning it into interesting and exciting and meaningful applications has always been a question of collaboration. So collaboration for a material scientist is a lifeblood, if there is my lifeline. In terms of the private sector, obviously, we cannot get where we are without collaborating with a supply chain, either from the raw material side or obviously to our end user. But to stay within the theme of the context of transcontinental collaboration, the context of Africa, less about astronomy, since that's not my field. Where I am, having been born and raised in one part of the world and now living in Canada, is we've all come to an understanding that great ideas are born in practically any part of the world. The Western world has no monopoly on great ideas anymore than Europe and countries that were nominally at one point called North and South. Those distinctions have been erased over time and something I would encourage because even if I were to take my field, some of the greatest and most exciting innovations around, say, recycling electronics doesn't come from Harvard, Yale, or Oxford or Cambridge, but from Ghana. Some of the most exciting innovation around microfinance and electronic finance and even banking doesn't come from Wall Street but from Nigeria. So one big culture shift that if it has not started already, that I would love to see happening is to get past the notion that there is a giver and a receiver in collaboration. That there are holy temples of learning in the first world and grateful beneficiaries in other parts of the world. Great ideas can come from anywhere in the world and its impact can also be felt in any part of the world. So in that new paradigm, where we look at just the lifecycle of an idea from its from its conception to its execution and thereafter its impact, that I believe should be the new paradigm for collaboration moving forward. I'm very grateful for Declan to have involved me in the process of putting together the Materials Day for the UN General Assembly Summit because it allows people like me to bring a private center entrepreneurial lens to collaboration. And that is where we find that we need each other. There is no single company in the private sector anymore that does the single university as prestigious as it might be or an NGO or a regulator or a legislator that can do the job alone. Material science, as I said, was born off collaboration, people looking across disciplines to see how they can work together and the success of material science in terms of how it's impacted our lives. If you think of silicon and the semiconductor revolution happened when a material scientist or a metallurgist or someone in extractive chemistry looked beyond their own four walls of the field to look into what applications are possible. In terms of the paradigm for collaboration, Canada is at the forefront for this new age. So this new wave of collaboration, which is based on equity in the broadest sense. It's not just a question of having people from five different continents in a room and then you know, nominally call it equity, but a genuine attempt to create an ecosystem, a village that is genuinely border free. To that extent, I would love to highlight an example and that and this group will be showcased at the UNGA this September is Create Seed. Create Seed is a Montreal-based consortium of which my company BioAstra is the lead industrial sponsor. But the idea is born off a professor who's dedicated her whole life, Clara Santatso, to resolving the problem of e-waste in the world. And the lead NGO is a lovely company called Upcycler based in Ghana. So you're already seeing Montreal company, North American professor and NGO in Ghana. Thereafter, you will be surprised at the people that have come on board from this nucleus of collaborators. We have no less than Metronic, Intel, we're about to get Dell and Apple on board. And before you know it, we have this community of people all dedicated to the problems of e-waste. And what I love about this particular group is it defies all labels. Is it North-South? Is it an academic-industry collaboration? Is it research versus field? Is it fundamental science meeting applied science? The answer is it's all of the above and none of the above. It is collaboration the way it should be. All of us driven by a cause that is bigger than ourselves, which is how to solve the problem of e-waste. And it's in tackling problems like e-waste, my friends, there we realize how truly there are no borders. There's no North-South, Africa, Canada, USA, private, fundamental, applied. We're all part of the problem that is e-waste in the production and consumption of electronic devices. But with our ideas and our desire to make the world a better place, we're all part of the solution. And in this collaboration, there's no hierarchy of good ideas. A good idea for an alternative to silicon can come and is coming from but it's also coming from University of Cape Town in South Africa. It's also coming from Alexandria University in Egypt, also coming from a university in India. So as utopic as it may sound, I believe that's the future where people coming together, putting aside old labels of North versus South, East versus West, industry versus academia, applied research versus fundamental research, and all coming together for a common good. I thank Declan for the opportunity in September because we will be showcasing for such genuine collaborations that have led to results on the ground but also use the NGA summit as an amplifier to take that and then move forward with a larger community. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Sumitra, for that stimulating discussion and perspective. And as you do speak, I just realized that I think we're running out of words in the sense that the language you use to describe various activities is very geographic, you know, with my with greater respect to the geographic scientists, geological and other scientists amongst us. Still, I think it's almost I wonder sometimes that if we take geography out of the discussion, then do we allow ourselves to float with the ideas and create these contexts? But of course, yeah, but apart from the geography, then we've got regulation, which I think very often is actually a barrier and impediment and certainly a barrier and impediment to advancing collaborations with those countries that are subject to these regulations and and rules but didn't invent them, which I would say is most of Africa, for example, and many other developing nations. And this amongst many areas impacts on on science data, on the exchange of data, access to data. And when you look at this in terms of in terms of what Sumitra has been speaking about and also in terms of health and particular women's health, then you have to wonder, well, you know, when are we going to get there, you know? So thank you, Sumitra, for those perspectives.
I may add, Declan completely agree with you. This should not gloss over the fact that there are barriers to that wonderful utopic collaboration in certain countries. Canada is amongst the most privileged people and we have that privilege to redefine collaboration on different terms. I'm mindful of that. But if the pandemic and other stuff and climate change has taught us anything, we're all in this together. So let's come together and collectively lower those barriers.
That's right. That's right. And as my dear friend in the States, Professor Hitzmann said, there's no planet B, which I like. You've all heard it before, but still it bears repeating. So again, thank you, Sumitra, and looking forward to really and to everybody, if you will soon have the opportunity to look at the work that Sumitra has done in helping us understand materials, I think, in a very fresh and exciting way, in a way that helps us look at these challenges together. So thank you, Sumitra. From Canada to Argentina, Eric Ruth is with us. He is from Immobile in Argentina and from a beautiful part of Argentina. I haven't been there yet, but he's been threatening to invite me. So until then, we have to look at his photographs, which are absolutely wonderful. Eric, the screen is yours. You're very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Declan. And thank you for inviting me to this meeting with all these distinguished people. And thank you to Sumitra, summarizing some points of view, which are, of course, very, very nice and to which I agree. Unfortunately, time doesn't give me the the possibility to show you all the nice pictures from where I'm based, which is north of Argentina, which is in a small province in the northeast of Argentina, where a provincial biodiversity institute has been created. This biodiversity institute is located in the Iguaçu Falls, if you may know those falls, they are situated in between Argentina and Brazil. And you can now see in the small screen, you can see my background, which is part of the Iguaçu Falls. We have, it's a young institute, barely four years. And it has been divided into strategic axis for approaching the work. And one is biodiversity and science. The second one is biodiversity and health. And biodiversity and society is the third one. And biodiversity and management of genetic resources, taking care of the Nagoya Protocol. So we are the authority for the Nagoya Protocol and we, as you see from the slide, we are aligned with the Estigies of the United Nations. This structure gives us a a series of projects which we align under the strategic axis. And it's here where we set up our collaborations, which are essential to our to our work because since we are young, we cannot pretend to evolve alone, but we rather need to share the experiences. And when we look at, for instance, a project like monitoring and survey of our forests, which is part of the Great Atlantic Forest, we work on the satellite project and we work, which Declan puts forward. We work on collaborate with University College of Dublin on space observation, setting up a collaboration on observing the forest from space. We are also doing an HPV study, clinical study, where we collaborate with Institut Carri in Paris, which is essential for us in order to advance in our understanding of the HPV, which is a treatable disease, but nonetheless is a major cause for death of women in Africa and in South America. So it's a public health problem that we try to approach. We work on society as well and there we collaborate again on the satellite project and we have also alternative production systems using the capacity of the biodiversity in terms of fungi and fruit, where we collaborate with the ministries, the local ministries. We are setting up a bio bank where we collaborate with the Institut Carri and University of Graz and Karolinska. And again, and a local national foundation, which is called Garahan Foundation, in order to be able to create this bio bank, which is going to conserve both biodiversity, animal and all species and all kingdoms, but also, not only that, but also human samples from clinical trials and also build a population gene bank of the local population, which is the Guarani population. So I've measured my time, so my five minutes are over. So if you have anything you would like to note, then please, I'm at your disposal. Finally, since Declan has not stopped me yet, I might mention another local project which collaborates over with Brazil and Paraguay, which is to conserve and observe a bird, which is the the harpy eagle, which is close to extinction in South America. So those are, in summary, what we do as collaborations and how we try to strive and grow in this area.
Thank you so much, Eric. Very inspiring and thank you for giving us such a breadth and help us to consider the scope of your work. And of course, it does speak cooperation, collaboration in many forms. And another conversation you've been enabling also is one that I think we need to hear more about, but that'll take another day, is indigenous knowledge. And that's something where we really, you know, is emerging as a, not emerging, it's already there, but I suppose it's becoming more relevant and there is a greater awareness about it amongst policymakers. And I think Africa is a domain where there is much indigenous knowledge to state the obvious. But yeah, so just one issue amongst many. So thank you very much, Eric.
So, Declan, just to, something we have been discussing is the South-South collaboration. And I think in what I mentioned, there are, as you mentioned, indigenous knowledge is something we are very interested on in, on the society side and science and society side, but also for instance, in areas like the HPV, because the numbers in Africa are equally high as in our area. So we have something in common we can study.
Thank you so much, Eric. I now turn to Brian McCallough, who is speaking today on behalf of the Executive Director of the Sahel Coalition, Dr. Jemay Agun. So Brian, the screen is yours.
Great. Well, thanks, Declan. And it's, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be, you know, part of this conversation. As you know, Declan, the Sahel Coalition is almost effectively a brand new organization. It's almost a little baby. It's just more than one year old. And so we don't have an effective forum to come to speak about today. However, one point to note, I think, is the fact that the Sahel Coalition itself is obviously formed from the basis of the G5 Sahel countries, that being Mauritania, Mali, Burkina Faso, Niger and Chad, as well as 60 international partners. And so collaboration is at the heart of what it is that we do. We are just at the beginning stages of launching a science initiative spearheaded by the Sahel Coalition. And so we'll look forward to meeting hopefully all of you guys at UNGA as well. And the reason we're doing that is because obviously the recognition that science and innovation play in development and economic development, social development, human development, et cetera. And we invite space to be a significant part of that effort. And so very much look forward to the input from from all of you on that as we build this pillar of collaboration within and from the Sahel. Because of its importance on everything from agriculture to, you know, biodiversity and combat and climate change and deforestation and resource management, both from, you know, forests and water as well as to what's in the ground and the soil's quality and even mineral resources as well. I think it's extremely important. Uh and even mineral resources as well, I think is extremely important. And has been underrepresented. And the information that can be obtained from from that knowledge, uh specifically with a specific focus on uh, you know, data, data-enabled uh policymaking and smart regulation, I think is very important. And so one of the things that we will be doing at the Sahel Coalition is bringing additional collaborations uh on science and innovation uh from within the Sahel, as well as from our our sixty partners uh around the world uh together. Uh and so as we build that, we'll keep you updated and very much look forward to sharing more. I think we'll have uh some very interesting things to to put forward uh this year and and culminating at the uh UN General Assembly. So I I know we're tight on time. So other than that, you know, I thank you and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Brian. And yes, no, thank you. Thank you all for being such you know, great presenters and efficient presenters. And I think that brings us to the end of the presentations and just, I suppose, uh reflecting on some of the presentations. And uh we 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 we, as as I think we've done, have to consider the the enabling environment, but I I suppose just uh turning attention a little bit to the and so-called support instruments for uh research and innovation in in Africa. And we we need to be uh conscious of those, as you know, uh following the European uh uh Union African Union Summit in in February, where where uh most of you have not all participated. The European Union launched its EU-Africa Innovation Strategy. Now, you can you can look at this innovation strategy in the launch of the strategy in two ways. You can say this is wonderful and it's a great opportunity to 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 input. Or you can say, well, actually, no one has any ideas, therefore they've launched a consultation strategy. So I'm I'm kinda torn between the two. But uh uh nevertheless, I I think it's vitally i- important that we recognize that there is, and I again, I hesitate before using the opportunities cliche, but there you go, I've just done it. And we need to recognize that there is considerable scope for Africa leadership and innovation through these various instruments. And I I I think that's a, that's a political mandate, if you like. I I think it's hugely important that Africa is is seen to lead, that is able to lead. Um but again, that that's why the issue of regulation is is so important, for example, because otherwise the 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 enabling uh regular regulatory environment is not there. Because the European Union's regulations and apply in Africa, the only problem is that uh Africa really is not aware of that. I think that's that's grossly grossly unfair. Uh because it i- in the case of the general deck, uh general data protection regulation that impacts on the on the on the transfer of data, for example, between African nations and Europe. And that is having a direct impact, for example, on on sharing data on health and in particular on 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 women's health, for example. Of course, it applies in many, many other areas. So I think we have to be very, very aware of this, and it's it's wonderful to talk about the great uh uh innovations that we are we address and that we we pursue and that we want to collaborate on. And however, there is a a regulatory environment out there and it 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 impacts. It in many cases dictates that we we cer- certain stuff can't be done, such as the use of data and access to data and the transfer of data. And as I said, this is this is hugely important. So there has to be much greater awareness of this in Africa. There has to be a great a better understanding that these regulations, and again, I I don't want to get into good or bad, but in the case of data regulations, there there has to be a greater realization that African nations have their own views on these, and these need to be need to be understood. And I think also there needs to be an accommodation of the 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 approach of a a a trusted environment also. But as I say rhetorically, you 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 cannot legislate for trust because there are a contradiction in terms, because if you if you had trust, then you don't need regulation. But again, regulation in many cases doesn't permit trust as a way to work. And I think this is, this is uh again, uh an impediment. So my my point here is while not pronouncing the uh uh right or wrong of of data protection and other regulations, my 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 point is this needs to be done in full collaboration with our partners, of course, around the world, but I think our 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 focus today here is i- in Africa, there are fifty-four uh nations, I believe. I'm not sure, but I believe it is uh only South Africa and it is only uh Kenya. I'm happy to be corrected on this, if anyone knows any better. I think these are the only nations that have advanced a a data protection regulation at at national level. And from what I've seen, uh un- unfortunately, I I think they're picking up the the worst aspects of the European Union regulation and trying to deploy it nationally. But anyway, this is this is why we need a further discussion. So I think what we've learned today is that we've had, we have and will continue to have some uh wonderful examples of of innovation. We have heard from Professor Intezar that we 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 we, there there needs to be a recognition of the of the leadership coming from Africa based on capability uh in Africa by Africans. I I I think there's that needs to be out there in front, that needs to be understood better by policymakers of of all flavors. And I think beyond then, that that then, I think, can allow us to advance collaborations in terms of a a equity in terms of uh uh equal partnerships and and collaborations and sharing. And I think another word for this is inclusiveness. And also, we need to find out, well, how do we, how can we maintain a commitment to scientific excellence? How can we do that? I think everyone agrees that the scientific excellence is 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 a worthy pursuit. But at the moment, in in my experience, and again, with that, I don't use these terms pejoratively, but scientific excellence probably defines, is probably one of the best examples of exclusivity. Because it's it's by and large just a a a small number of countries. So that's not inclusive. So again, how do you maintain the the commitment to scientific excellence? And then how do you do that uh in- inclusively? And you you you've demonstrated today many examples of in in inclusive projects, but this needs to be more uh advanced at a policy and and a political level and needs to be made real. And this is a very strong message coming from the from the United Nations. And I suppose inclusivity means also, I mean, the 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 increasing the 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 level and and range of of women in in science. It's just one example of my own take on that is the need to increase the uh number uh of women in science decision-making and not just science. I I think that's a that's a very, very strong uh aspect. Otherwise, we're we're going to be in 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 continue to be in the circle we live in. And ladies and gentlemen, uh you have been wonderful. We will take this forward through the good offices of 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 Afas and and please uh consider it a a another opportunity to to advance the dialogue where I know you have been been a a key part. I would just remind you again, we'll be coming back together to submit under the EU-Africa uh Innovation Strategy uh uh in a very positive uh 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 frame of mind. And then also from the sublime to the le- less sublime, in terms of Horizon Europe. Uh you will be invited to to our consultation around submission to the next work program. And not wishing to focus on 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 access to funding, but we all have to we all have a need of it in 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 some form. So let's advance the dialogue with policymakers and gradually encourage them to create a a stronger uh enabling environment for collaborative research. So at that, I will I will conclude and 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 thank you uh also so very, very much for your availability uh this afternoon at at short notice. However, I think that's kind of in one sense, the the world we we live in, but something we can we can look forward to in in terms of a stronger foundation for cooperation and collaboration at a at a at a truly global level. And let's work to express that at the United Nations General Assembly beginning on the thirteenth of September uh this this year. So thank you, friends and colleagues, and we will be back in touch very shortly. Thanks indeed. Have a wonderful weekend or week indeed and afternoon. Thanks. Stay well, stay healthy.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Bye bye, Declan.
Thank you all. Bye bye. Thank you.